Exercise.
Alright. Guess we need to approve the minutes from February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I said that all in favor. We need to approve the bills for March.
Make sure we pay the bills. I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay. On our discussion, Brian's not here today for the maintenance report.
He said give me a bullet thing that I can read, so you can read it if you want. We signed the contract to Rock Mountain Power for the streetlights. On well number three, he had the pump cold. It was in really bad condition. But it is being serviced and rebuilt. And it should be back in by the end of the month. He has been trying to work at the water buildup on Goshen Road, trying to regrade the sides so it'll drain off. It's been super soft and muddy. Him and the county did inspect the bridge over there on Goshen Road that's in basalt. And they said it's actually in good condition, but it's not a bridge, it's a culvert. So if we ever have to replace that, there's not a lot of funding that you can get for that, just so you know. Oh, looks like he's been repairing rodent damage around the sewer lagoons. We also had to start sending sewage down to Firth, started on the tenth. And he thinks it'll be for at least thirty days. And then he is gonna start looking at bids for some summer road repairs. And we might still get some help from the county. We'll see how that goes. So that's what he's been working on.
Does he wait it for the town, which is out of Haverhill Tuesday night? Kind of give him, you know, the spiel on the, some of the chip ceiling and stuff they're going to be doing? And how, you know, to match the price and things. And so I'm sure he's, you know, Brian hasn't talked to him about that.
Yeah.
He's mentioned that to him. I'm sure it's the same kind of thing.
Yeah. We've talked to him a little bit, but ask more questions.
Okay, update on the investments.
So I just, I had printed up, I just wanted to show you what I did with our money, because I moved it. So this sheet right here shows the deposit I made on the twenty fourth of February in each account. And then I opened an investment account through the state treasurer for water. So you can see which, what the balance is on each one. And we start making some extra interest on that money instead of letting it sit.
And how much is the interest?
Right now, it's roughly four and a half percent interest. Each account's a little different.
So how much does that gain?
Well, well, by the time it'll sit in there for a whole month, it'll about double what we were pulling in.
Which is?
So roughly on general, we were making about six hundred a month for the funds that were there. Now it'll go to about twelve hundred, because the amount of money has doubled. Sewer, same thing. And then water, we haven't been making anything on interest. So we were able to set it up starting with twenty thousand that hopefully we can start adding to.
Thanks for doing that, Robin.
Yeah.
This city can use its resources to make a lot of money.
Exactly. And then I just, as I was getting ready to leave my office, this email came in. So I didn't get it in your folder, but the LTAC grant that we were hoping for, for the hundred thousand for next fiscal year, we did not get. And this is the list, if you wanna take one look at it, you're welcome to. So the red line is the cutoff. Firth got it again, they were right here. There's points right here. We're clear down here at the bottom is where we did it.
Did they give us a reason why? Did they tell us?
Because every year you gotta reapply.
I think it has to do with activity. We'll see. I haven't been able to talk to house or anything, so.
Hey, anything else? So Kathy Nelson was supposed to be here.
This was representing.
Okay. She's not gonna be here?
Just last minute, Lori called me and said they would be able to make it. I don't know why. I think that's.
Okay, so I guess we can present this issue and see what the council thinks about it.
Yeah, it's just a discussion right now.
Yeah, we'll just, and I thought I'd go around and visit some of my neighbors and ask them what they thought, just on a one-on-one.
Sure.
Because we have an ordinance that, so what the, what they're trying to do is we have a neighbor down the road that has an old trailer house that is falling apart. It's, it's, it's in poor, poor shape.
Pretty unlivable.
Anyways, I can't afford to really do a whole lot. But there is assistance and help that is possibly available to remove the trailer and bring in another trailer. So in our ordinance, it says that if you remove a trailer,
You have to have foundation.
You have to have foundation, manufactured home or house. And so because of the circumstances, what the question is, is can this, can she be helped with pulling a trailer out and put another trailer back in the same spot? With another trailer, so that's the special.
So what exactly is our ordinance? I guess it have to, do we have specific?
It specifies size.
Home size, it has to be on foundation, yeah.
Roof.
You know, it has seventy-two or eighty-six, anyway. And I assume this is an old, old, old trailer, been there forever. Well, so there's, there's two ways to go about it. The, the best way to do it is, obviously is council, you guys set the rules, so you can, you know, give grant variances to the rules. But you would wanna do that through a, you know, the public, uh, zoning process, which require a public hearing. But I don't know what the neighbors think about it, because you want her to upgrade. Because I assume that would be a big improvement for the area. But you don't wanna open a can of worms that changes the rules for everybody.
Well, probably is.
That's the hard part. We have a lot of people in a similar situation.
Right, so you do it for one person, all of a sudden everybody else wants to do the same thing.
And if you go through the public hearing process for the variance, obviously you've gotta set your reason why. So that, you know, there is a difference to everybody. Yeah, I mean, so that's, that's the hard part.
I think the hardest part is, is where it's part of the church. We don't wanna show a favoritism either, because that's the way some people are gonna take that. And so.
It's good for the gander.
Gotta be careful with that. So I thought I would go around and visit some of the neighbors and just ask them what they thought and their opinions and and explain the situation and just kinda see, what do you guys think?
Wasn't, didn't she come a few months ago and weren't they trying to sell part of it so they'd have money?
They came, that was just before I came along. I know, so I wasn't here. They did it for splitting it.
But, but that was, that was the plan way before me. And with the idea to take the money. But I don't know that they, I don't know that she really understood that with the ordinance, it wasn't like they, because it's not like they're gonna get a ton of money. I mean, they sell that lot, you know. So I don't know that there would be enough funds to, to actually put in a foundation, a new home, or newer home. You know, so, so that was the question. And I don't know if that's where they got to, and then she backed out. I, I, I understand this is whole, this has been a whole community effort, helping her over the years. And I get it. She's, she's staying with Lori right now. Lori and, uh, Mike, Mike and Kathy are staying with her. And I don't know what changed, because they were gonna be here and, 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 you know, just so they could listen. They're not, they're not mad or anything, just trying to understand what they can and they can't do. And I, I'm acting as, not, I haven't recused myself. They have asked me to represent them as a railter. And I've said, well, I got kind of this, well, things going on, I gotta be careful there too. So, but I said I'd surely come to the meeting, find out where, where we're at and what we can do.
So how do we go about that?
Well, so if you, if you wanna go about the variance process, then you would, you would publish once, you know, ahead of a, a meeting, and then you have your public hearing. You gotta even notice everybody within three hundred feet, you know. And generally it's better if somebody goes and explains what's going on.
I was gonna say, probably the best thing to do is to start by talking to neighbors.
Well, and when you, and when you get that notice, because what, over the years, what you find out is, everybody comes in with their hair on fire, because they don't know what's going on. When they just get this letter in the mail.
Can we just put a letter explaining something in the mail?
Yeah, that would be the notice you'd have to give them after the public hearing. And then everybody comes and expresses, you know, the good and the bad. You know, and the council takes that all into consideration. And the big deal here is obviously, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So you have to have a reason for why you're doing what you're doing. And if all the neighbors think that, yeah, that's an upgrade and everybody's fine, and then you'll never get challenged on it. But if somebody's gonna say, you know, I mean, if somebody wants to, you know, that's not the ordinance and you're gonna do this for everybody, yeah, you gotta, you gotta wade through that and make, make a logical decision about it. Yeah, you do have to go through that public hearing process if you're gonna do that.
So if you put out that letter, do you have to put out the ordinance also?
Probably.
Well, you're just, you're just saying a variance to that ordinance. You know, this is what we're doing. So the public hearing will be to gather information on whether or not a variance should be granted to that ordinance.
I do feel like, as I've talked to people, not necessarily about this, but other things, I feel like most people around here know that ordinance and understand it already. Well, if they've lived around here.
Well, because of what the previous mayor, what happened.
Yeah.
I just don't want things like that happening again.
Traders off their property because of the ordinance, so.
Yeah.
That could come back.
I feel like it could cause issues.
Well, you know, and the dilemma is, I mean, the example I would use is, you know, we had an A-frame up in Idol Park years ago that the sewer system was a fifty-five gallon drum and ground, the whole thing. And when it got busy, it overflowed into the reservoir, you know, kind of thing. But when we were putting the septic in, we were ninety-seven feet from the well, and you're supposed to be a hundred. And the health district at first were like, well, no, you're gonna have to buy some ground. Well, I'm like, well, we're not doing that. I mean, we can't, the neighbors don't let that. So you need to approve the ninety-seven feet, and we're not gonna up the system, you know. And it took them, and they kept, well, yeah, we want you to improve your system, and well, then you gotta let us do it with the ninety-seven feet, you know, I mean, and they finally did. Same thing kinda here. You want her to be able to approve her, her lot and clean it up and make it nicer, but it's against the rules. You know, I mean, you gotta figure out a reason to bend the rules. So.
Well, and it may be, I, I mean, we, we're just initial, the, the main thing was she was absolutely in a very unhealthy situation. And, and so I guess in times past, she has said, I will not leave. And so at least we made some progress to, to get her out, so we could try to figure out what, you know, what can be done. But yeah, you know, gone are the days when you could buy a, a reasonable double wide for twenty or thirty thousand and put it in for ten and ten, you know, I mean, you know, I was just looking at some today, and they wanna sell them real bad, but they're over a hundred thousand dollars. And it's like, they won't really, it's hard.
The only thing that pops into my mind is something that's not so much of a city council issue, but is community issue. Is get a GoFundMe going for her, online GoFundMe. And she maybe will pick up the extra money, beside from, you know, selling the one piece, and extra money to be able to do it properly.
So what about like building a tiny house?
That's the other thing too, that, uh, you can do, you know, sell, sell them that and build a tiny house.
Kind of asked about before, like, where does that fall into like the single wide tiny house?
Be on a foundation.
Yeah.
On a foundation. Like really, a tiny home doesn't cost that much to build.
Yeah, and that might be, that might be cheaper, and she still did a GoFundMe to make sure she had what she could.
Put in under the ordinance.
I don't think you had a, I don't think there was a square foot requirement on a sticked-up home. You wanna check that out.
Foundation.
You know, so when you're, because a tiny home, I mean, you're just talking about six, seven hundred squares of the home, kind of thing.
Yeah, just be, it would be just her and.
Trailer houses aren't mine. More than five or six hundred square foot.
They're about nine.
Nine?
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I mean, it might be a little more than what this would be, but, you know, again, if, if that's an option, that's at least something I can take back to them and say, possibility.
Seems like that would be something that, I mean, if you're, if you gotta pay a hundred for a used trailer home.
Well, I use that as an example. I, I think, you know, and you look, you probably get fifty or sixty, but, but still, twenty for, you know, twenty for a foundation.
Still, by the time you transport it.
Yeah, exactly. That's fifteen or more.
Sewer and everything together.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there are a lot of companies that are doing the tiny homes. I'm not a show around here though, I haven't seen them on Facebook, on YouTube doing videos, and art, this is the one we built for so-and-so, and they talk about it a little bit. So that might be something, you know, needs to be looked into as a ti- tiny home. Does she need a one or two bedroom?
Two.
Two bedroom, two bedroom, one bath?
Yeah.
Kitchen, kitchen dining room combined? Yeah, that's, I've seen several of those on, uh, plans, but those have been posted on Facebook.
Okay, I guess we can think about that, figure it out.
So her house is unlivable why?
The roof has fallen in and the, the septic system.
We don't know what the sewer's doing, but she has, she has open sewage underneath the trailer.
It's in really, 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 really.
And then the mold in the roof, the roof, and, and I understand Guy has tried to, or, or, I don't know who.
Several people have tried.
Yeah, tried to fix it, yeah.
Plenty of people have tried to fix it. Yeah, about the time you make all the effort to try to fix it, you might as well just.
The one side of the trailer is so bad from the, this, the south side. What's that?
The swamp.
Did that run all, anyway, there's no electrical even on that side. So we went and tried to put a, put a dryer in, electric dryer, and it had been literally blowing all that lint underneath. Nothing, going nowhere. And I said, Kathy, this is, this is just a fire waiting to happen.
And so she's just moved in with her daughter now?
Yeah, yes, in I- in Idol Falls.
And they don't wanna make a residence there, they can't? It's difficult.
I don't know what's changed, because they wouldn't even consider it. I, I think, I think the bigger question was with Mike. You know, everybody can deal with mom, but not necessarily Mike. But Lori, Lori's agreed, Mike's there, and, and I don't, you know, I don't know what changed, but.
Sounds like it's a very temporary situation.
Well, at, at least it's time enough so we can try to figure out what options there are and, and kinda take it from there.
So does she even have any money to be able to do anything on her own? She probably doesn't have anything on her own.
She doesn't.
So it's.
Whatever.
So she would, she would rely on selling a piece of the property or whatever donation.
That was the idea, is to sell that one to the west.
And on that piece of property, is there a room, do you think, put anything on there?
A tiny house.
On that little, but yeah, you just wouldn't have much, yeah.
I feel like, is there even any room?
It would have to be angled or something.
Is, is this canal access on the left or the right of the canal?
I have no idea.
Oh my god.
Because it goes right through the center of that.
That side.
Somebody's gonna buy it for nothing. I mean, because you can't put anything on it, because of where that canal is. I don't know.
Well, I.
Because it's an odd spot, I mean.
It shows that it's just under a half an acre, but I can't tell if that means it takes, if the canal has to come clear out of that too.
So, because that's an odd pellet.
Yeah, by the time you offset from the road and then the canal, that puts it, not much space there.
Yeah, yeah, if it's not billable, it's, it's literally worth.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess you can keep in communication with them and wait and see how that goes.
I will do. Thank you.
All right.
So, so at this point, we're just, did the neighbor say yay, yay?
We haven't talked, we, we're just bringing that up out. And so we can, I, I can go around and visit, I don't mind doing that. And then ultimately, it's up to the council for their decision, but we can send, we can send out a letter.
People too, so you know how they feel.
Do that at the public hearing.
Oh, do that at the public hearing?
Because your public hearing is based upon the facts that come in there. America go around, you know, he has to be careful, because he's the tiebreaker, if there's a typo. But yeah, the whole point of the public hearing is to get the facts and the, you know, things for council to consider. So you don't want a lot of ex parte communications going over.
Why don't we just do that? Just go ahead and put a letter out, just go through the effort.
Start there.
Yes, we have to do something. She's got raw sewage coming out of there.
Yeah, it's pretty.
So if we put a letter out though, are we doing a public hearing?
If you're sending a letter to do a public hearing, then yeah, because you gotta post it in the paper and then.
That's the point of the letter, is the public hearing.
I think we just have the public hearing and then we can get people's input, and then we don't have to necessarily, I mean, I don't know what she wants to do. Maybe she's gonna decide to stay living with her daughter.
Kind of makes sense.
A lot will depend on.
On, on the variance at that meeting, do they?
No, it's serving.
Yeah, so they get, they get to do it as a fact-finding public hearing, and then put off voting until.
That's up to council.
Yeah.
Whether they wanna do that.
So what's the difference between that?
Well, so you can, so you can do your public hearing and then think about it for a month, and then come back and give your logic of why you decided what you're doing. You don't have to, I mean, you can, you can vote that night. The only thing, so then you have to have findings of facts, which, you know, then I draft your logic of why you made the decision that you did. That will be approved, has to be approved in another month, because I don't know what you're gonna decide, so I can't draft them ahead of time. So it does take a month or two, you know, a meeting or two to get them all done. But, yeah, those decisions have to be.
Give it a little more time.
At, at least as far as the actual issue, you know, no one's using and, and thinking, this, the weather's changing a little bit, so we thought if we could even get in and just winterize the trailer. They're, I think this weekend or over the next week or two, they're gonna get what she needs out. So that would just leave.
Seems like they had to just sell the property and give that money to her daughter and just, you know.
Well, but, but there's a big difference between no buildable or very minimal buildable to something that could be replaced in terms of value. I, I mean, if there's, if, if the lot to the side is not even buildable, it's just a piece to put a cow on or something. You know, it's just.
Gone.
Yeah.
Do you know they took that alternate school out there in Blackfoot? And out by the interstate, they moved all those double wides out there.
You know, I, I did see those.
I think there's four of them out there.
Just right before the exit there, somewhere in there. Yeah.
Now, those, those were, were school rooms, so they have heaters and, and everything in.
Sure.
Need a little interior work to petition, but they are double wides and they have the overhangs. You know, they're, they're sitting there and they've been there since they built a new school, so.
Yeah, okay.
Do they have plumbing for like a restroom? Yeah, they have his and her restrooms. That's when the schools were cool.
So, so here's a question that maybe he asked based on the, based on the ordinance. See, the way I understand it is that that's the piece where the trailer is now? It's tiny. I mean, we're talking, I think it's like a.
Those are, those are small double wides.
Yeah, but I, but isn't there, could that be the grandfather part? I'm thinking it's a quarter of an acre, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think the order, ordinance is half acre or larger now.
Yeah, but there was a variance that they gave her.
There's a variance on that before, but that's a lot easier variance to do, because then you're.
Because you're upgrading.
You're upgrading, and the home standards are still the same.
Yeah.
So then everybody has to comply with the home standards, and you're going to have very few small lots in town. So that's a lot easier variance to justify than waiving all of the building requirements.
Yeah.
Just from a, you know, from a practical standpoint, you're not gonna open a can of worms. Because you're only gonna have a few funny lots in town versus how many things.
Well, I'll, I'll check on that. I, I've been meaning to actually see.
Through that, um, I forget what the name is.
The schools are selling them?
Yeah, I think they're the schools that own the charter, you know.
Oh, okay.
Those are probably very reasonable. I'm sure they are.
Okay.
Now, does Mike bring in enough income that could help pay for?
So, and, and again, I, I don't know the, Mike got a degree and, and was supposed to start teaching to where he would have some reasonable income. Right now is, it's kind of more of a assisting an elderly person. And I don't think it's much over minimum, honestly. So I, I haven't asked him, but, but it's not much.
I, I just didn't know what kind of work he did, you know.
Yeah, no, he, he does have, he went ahead and got a degree, but he just didn't take that next step. Well, thank you. I'll, I'll do some, I'll, I'll do some checking and, and then you, so what, what is the time process? Yeah, for, if, if you do that, is that like a month and then another month or?
I have to wait two months.
Two months.
Maybe three.
Yeah, because you gotta put the letter out, the notice, and then, you know, go through the whole process, so.
And you just meet once a month?
Yeah.
Well, you can do it two, and if there was a time crunch, you can always post a special meeting and approve the findings real quick.
Okay. And how would I find out if that piece to the west?
I know the county has a map.
Yeah, but would they just defer me back to the city?
No, I can.
Does that, does that map over there show much of the, it doesn't have the sizes?
Well, but I, I think it's, yeah, it shows, I, it's been split. It, it's, they still have it under one tax number. But I can't, I just can't tell if the canal takes a chunk out of that point four, three, or four, seven, or whatever.
You might get ahold of the canal company and ask them, which I, because of my father, when he's across the street, his service is on the the, the middle side.
Yeah.
And all those. I know that fence line twists in the back.
Usually the way canal eastwards ours, it's part of their property, but it's in the canal domain. They usually don't own that.
And that would be, that would be snake river.
Yeah, I think it's Chris, you said.
Are they gonna financially be able to afford or receive help to? If, 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 if they can take the trailer out, put another one up, or they gotta be able to afford to do that?
Yeah. There, there is a problem.
With the family, I think so. I think that's something that, that they could all come together on and would, because it's small, I think.
I, I don't think the county will let you move that trailer. I think you have to tear it all down on the property.
Just piece by piece?
These two.
But I, I don't think you can move it.
Now, which two?
Yeah, put it in there.
We can't put it in there, so you can't move it.
Tear it apart, this one.
And haul it up. So it's not a rule where you have to tear it down, disassemble it inside.
Then you gotta redo all the water and sewer, electrical.
Middle of the canal, that's a fire and I really. I think it has to.
About point seven five.
That's what it says.
That's different than point four. I don't know where I got the point four, three.
Usually with canals, they run that center line down, and they have a prescription. Usually with canals, they run that center line down and they have a prescriptive easement on each side.
I think where her trailer sits now is the smaller piece.
Yes.
Well, this says point seven five two. Unless.
Unless that's total between the two of them.
The two.
Probably.
Okay, well, thanks for taking time and I'll find out more.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Gil, you wanted to talk about some brooms for the street.
Yeah, uh, 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 update information, right? What was mentioned last time about wearing out in one trip through the city. I was talking to one of the, uh, companies and they said, that's operator abuse, cause a broom should last a hundred twenty to, or more. Depending on the makeup of the broom, miles. You know, and for the go, if you wore out in ten miles is the first one. Basically, so you have the road. The broom should just be barely flicky. And if someone's pushing it down like this, trying to muscle it, that's gonna wear the broom out and. And it'll be less than half the time or even less, more than that. Cause after, after a little bit, also now they're down this much, wearing this much of the broom. And so I was looking around prices, um, you can get some cheap ones for about thirty-four to five thousand dollars. Or you can get the, the good ones from either Titan, Everything Equipment or All About Att- or All Attachments. Um, Everything Equipment is the best, best company out there. And everybody offers seventy-two inch wide brooms for the, to go, to go on the, on the tractors. Everything Equipment also offers, you know, besides the six flitters, seven foot and eight foot ones. The eight foot one is just under ten thousand dollars. But it's also a thirty-two inch diameter broom. And they said, I said, they said it's supposed to last about a hu- at least a hundred and twenty miles of proper use. And the first, one of the first sentences on their website, it needs finesse to operate this type of equipment. And it needs to be just barely flicky, not dragging.
I think the other issue with the broom is the practicality of, like, if you get a whole bunch of snow, how much does it really move?
Well.
If you're just flicking.
Well, you see, no, that's flicking the surface, that's not what's above the surface of the road. So you're not, the, the problem that wears it out is rubbing on the road, not moving the snow.
I think part of the problem is, is number one, to, to have a broom, you gotta have a tractor to run it.
Right, but there are some of them that would like, all, uh, um, all attachments has one that bolts onto, onto other tractors. And I'm trying to get a price out of them.
I think number two is like how, how fast it can go. And the tractor that we currently have, even though it is old, it moves right down the road pretty quick, or a broom is pretty slow.
The broom is gonna be like a, a street sweeper speed going around.
Slow.
And.
Ultimately, we're trying to get out of using the tractor for snow.
We would like to just get a real plow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big snow, you wouldn't give it too much.
So before, I, I would, wouldn't recommend the city just buy it out of budget, but try to get a grant and only buy it if they can get a grant.
Yeah.
That way it's, you know, it's not, it's, you get a grant, oh, we need to get this and that, and I don't know, it's, you know, for the, uh, the tractor has enough hydraulic on it to, if they, if it had a quick connect on it, you could put it on, on that. And you, you know, get the, you know, like the eight foot wide one and, you know, go around. Now, what, uh, the thing is, so if someone's driven, driven on the snow first, all you're gonna do is remove the loose snow, not the track where they drove. You're not trying to scour the pavement. That's where the problem is. People try to scour the, to get that off, and that's where they wear the broom out real quick. And it's, you know, it's like, you know, it's like a whisker, you're just flicking it out of the way.
Yeah. Yep, I've seen them in operation before, not in snow, but I can only imagine that it would be really slow. And it wouldn't do very deep snow.
Uh, I've seen videos of them doing like, you know, six, eight inches deep with it, but yeah, it's slow. They're just going, just like you would with a snowball. And which is the other thing, which is cheaper, but it also throws it a lot farther. And that's more of an issue that was brought up last time.
Throw it all over, replace cars.
And hitting a window or something or, but yeah.
Yeah.
Anyways, uh, so I get, update that information, what I found out on that. And, uh, if, you know, if the city can find, or find a grant somewhere that they might be able to apply to that, that's an option. Just give me options.
Yeah, I think Brian is leaning towards more of a truck with plow and not like fur pass and.
Yeah.
I, I watch the tractors walking down the road and I'm like, that is pretty productive, the way that fur is.
Their tractor's wearing out.
It is wearing out, but.
Yeah.
Time versus money. You put a guy in the tractor that goes super slow, you're costing more money to the city. And then it's not getting done, it's taking forever. And so it's always time versus money too.
Then it's also how much is wearing on the street.
Yeah.
So there's, so there's a lot of input to figure out.
Okay, any, anything else?
You're just here?
I'm just here for the fun.
For the laughs, giggles and the entertainment, huh?
Yeah, to answer questions, figure out about the sewer again.
Well, I heard from LTAC.
Yeah, I tried to find that on the website, so I'll also look it up when we're done here.
They printed out the list.
Well, I guess that's everything. I think that's it.
It's the crazy lady in the back.
The crazy lady's on.
Make motion, you're doing, you mean?
I second.
Calling finger. Okay, thank you.